Okay, we have a slight change we'd like to make in the agenda order tonight. I'd like to move action items J1 and J2 up to right before the superintendent's report. Motion for that?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Citizens and delegation, anybody here would like to speak to anything that's not on the agenda?
Okay.
Are you sure? Think about it. Okay, the consent agenda, we will need a motion for, and that would consist of minutes from the regular meeting scheduled Monday, July 10th, scheduled checks written from 7:04 through 8:01. Teaching staff resignation of Jason Dreyer from his full-time social studies instructor position, the new hire Chase DeKleen to the full-time social studies instructor position at the high school, and the resignation of Rhonda Richland from her full-time Spanish EL instructor position at Valley View. Also, we have the hire of Amanda Schrader, full-time information and communication specialist with the district, and she'll tend to be starting August 21st. And then there are 63 co-curricular contracts being presented for approval.
Before I make the motion, I just wanted to ask, is that Chase DeKleen?
Yes.
Is that alumni and son of Norv DeKleen?
Yes.
Okay, so I wasn't sure. I'll make the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. And that would bring us to J1 and J2. Mr. Schmidt.
All right, as part of the capital improvements plan, we have the two items tonight that were on the agenda. One is to increase the size of the maintenance storage area at Valley View so that it can accommodate a lawnmower with a broom and a salt spreader on it. Currently, we own, the tractor can't house those pieces of equipment because the storage shed is too small. So what I'm presenting here is to build a structure that's similar in construction to what the school is now so that it looks like it's part of the school. And you can see, it's going to come off the current storage building. It's approximately five feet deep by nine feet wide, and this will allow us to get a piece of equipment into that storage area.
Is that in the back of the school, Tom?
It's in the back of the school. Let's see here. Location, back of the school, this is currently where the storage shed is, and it has a footing and a foundation there, and we're going to build on top of that. So there'll be no excavation required, just simply constructing the building and making it match the school.
So is it bigger than the one that's there now?
It's in addition to the one that's there now.
Oh, okay.
So if you take a look at this, this is the current storage shed right here. So this will bring it out so that the equipment can come straight in, and then we'll have a little place to put the mower decks and stuff like that when they're not using them.
Where are they putting that piece of equipment now?
Well, they had to get an all-wheel steer vehicle, and they have a mat right here because it scrapes the wall, and they get it in just far enough that you can get the door closed. But it doesn't allow us to put a rotary broom on. And the reason I like the rotary broom is because when you clean the sidewalks, it gets right down to bare pavement. Right now, they're using a snow blower, so every time it hits any kind of joint in the concrete, it leaves snow. Then they go back with a, like a fertilizing spreader walk behind to put salt down. So what I'd like to do is get that sidewalks and their entrances cleaned up right down to bare concrete. This will allow us to do that, to get the right piece of equipment to fit in that facility.
And did you say we had that broom already, that piece of equipment?
No, this is part of the plan that I had moving forward in the 1718 budget year. We have, in that plan is to replace the particular tractor they have there. The tractor is still very usable, so what I'd like to do, and you'll see in the next proposal or agenda item for Cormier, I'd like to take that tractor and move it to Cormier, get a broom for it and put it in that, because that'll be more than adequate tractor.
Tom, do you want to do them both right now and then approve them at the same time?
Sure. Sure.
So just so you're clear on this, while Tom pulls up next one.
There'll be separate.
It's not a separate building at Valley View, it's just an addition on the building?
Addition on to.
And the same thing with Cormier, it's just adding some space on so we can fit the equipment in. And it's really a time savings for the custodial team, so they're not pulling things off equipment every time they use it, and they're able to just back it in and pull it out.
So this is the proposed location of the addition under Cormier. Currently, the custodial office is right here, so there'll be a doorway into it so we can access it from inside the building, allow our equipment to come out. Currently, he has a rotary broom, which is a walk behind, which is 30 inches wide, because that's the only thing that will fit inside the door to get into the school. And he also has to take the gas tank off every time he takes it in and out because it's inside the school. So this will allow us to get a tractor there. You know, we've done some work in trying to establish how drop-off and pickup is done, so we have a lot more pickup out on the street, which means we have a lot of, when the plows come through, they're consistently filling that space back up. Having a riding tractor with a commercial snow blower on it will assist a lot in that, and also a rotary broom.
And that one would require foundation, footings and foundation work?
Correct. This one will require the excavation and installation of a frost wall. That's why you see that the price is a little bit more expensive. We are trying to match the existing brick on the exterior of the building, including the glass block. If you've seen that elevation, there's glass blocks to let right into the gymnasium. So we'll make that match. The contour of the roof will be the same pitch as the current roof with the same asphalt shingle. So this is part of kind of relocating the tractor from Valley View, so we have a pretty good plan in place. Right now, he just has a walk behind snow blower and a walk behind rotary broom to take care of all of the sidewalks and put them on.
Does the village do the grass there, Tom, or is he?
The village does. The bigger parts of the grass, there's some parts of grass getting around this area, and some of here they can't get in there with their big mower.
So push more of that?
We push more of that, yep, currently.
Okay.
Well, Tom, you said that this allows fuel to be stored in that?
Correct. It'll have a four-hour fire rating on it, so we'll be able to drive equipment in there and park it. We do have a flammable locker that'll go in there too for gas cans and whatnot, just as a preventative measure, which is what we do now.
Seems like this'll just be much more efficient anyway.
Correct. This will greatly improve how we take care of the sidewalks and the maintenance around that building, especially during the winter time.
And that's a safety issue as well. I mean, and I know at Valley View too, to have those, not have the sidewalks clear, it can be very slippery.
Correct. And as a self-insured school district, one slip and fall will-
With work comp, one slip and fall pays for these two construction projects.
Absolutely.
So it's really, it's a, it's a, it's a strong need that we have. It's been on the capital improvements plan for a number of years, and it's moved into position now to have that taken care of, so.
What are the costs on these, Tom?
Twenty-nine thousand.
And eleven thousand for the other one?
Twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for the Cormier addition, and eleven thousand twenty dollars for the Valley View addition.
Have you worked with that Van and Langenberg Construction?
Yep.
You have?
Yep.
I had not heard of them.
A smaller contractor, but more than capable for this kind of work.
For this kind of?
Yep. You'll see the, you know, when you look at the bids, there's some bigger number, those are the bigger companies, you know, a little more overhead, so.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, can we get a, any other discussion on this? Let's start with the Valley View. Can we get a motion on?
Do you want to do them separately?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Valley View as presented.
For eleven thousand twenty dollars?
Yep, eleven thousand twenty.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
And then you want me to make a motion for the second one?
Sure.
I'll make the same motion, but for the Cormier.
And then that was for twenty-nine eight seventy-five?
Yep.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, again, a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those will be done this summer yet?
The Valley View project, I'm hoping to have that done before school starts because it doesn't require an excavation. The Cormier project probably will happen during the course of the, of the fall, but it isn't, it's in a location where there's really no student activity for a drop-off, so there'll be meetings with the contractor to ensure that they understand the times that they can't be, going in and out with equipment and stuff like that.
Sure.
Yeah, good question.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to superintendent's report.
Okay, couple of announcements here. We got a really nice phone call about a week, a week and a half ago, and learned that one of our tech ed teachers, Jeremy Maieri, is going to be named at a ceremony later this year, I think it's in October. He won what's called the Brighter Image Award. It's a, an award that goes, its name's a tech ed teacher for the new manufacturing alliances. It's their sixth annual excellent manufacturing alliance K-12 partnership awards dinner, is what they call this. But it involves, the tech ed department will get a separate donation, a thousand dollars in cash awards this November, and then a separate donation will also be made to the Bo Metler Center in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. You know, we're just proud of these guys, they're just making the mark, and they're getting a lot of recognition, you know, in the area. You know those guys are very active at the state level, so they're unselfish and extending a lot of help to other districts, so. You'll hear more about that, I'm sure that'll be publicized, but it was a fun phone call to get, that was a call from Ann Franz. I wanted to just let you know too that our administrative retreat was, past two days, we did the Green Bay Escape Activity yesterday. So we had three teams, and it was a real good, we mixed our administrative team, and it was really a fun activity, a lot of nice compliments came out of that. Today, we worked from 7:30 until 3:00 on just goal setting, setting the focus for next year. So focus areas at all of the individual sites, as well as focus areas now for the district. And what I'll do is we're going to pull all that information together. I hope to come to you in September and kind of give you a summary of the student survey data, just the overall district services report, a similar report that you've received in the past, and just the big picture, where our goals are and where we're trying to march now as we move forward. And then I wanted to invite you, if you're able to attend, we have our Welcome Back, that's Tuesday, August 29th. And a little different this year, we'll have the breakfast again, starting at 7:30 in the high school cafeteria, and then we'll transition to the PAC. So I'm going to guess it'll, we'll start the program, I'll just sense when we think we have everybody in there, obviously, it'll probably start off at about 8:15-ish, and that usually lasts about an hour and 20 minutes, hour and 30 minutes, just depends. So if you're able to make it, then that would be great. Then, you may have read in the most recent Ashwaban on press about, we're going to be honoring Coach G, and I just wanted to announce that publicly. He's going to be honored, what is our date on that?
September 8th.
September 8th, thank you. So there's going to be a little ceremony at 6:30 that night before the game, and then there'll be a reception afterwards for 9:30 to 10:30, casual reception right in the fieldhouse lobby. So, I don't know, do you have any other questions for me?
You said the reception afterwards?
Yeah, the reception afterwards will be from 9:30 until 10:30, and that would be in the fieldhouse lobby. And then, just again, a last reminder, this Saturday is our Ashwaban on Blast, and that involves a car show, fun games for the kids, a lot of activities, and then live music, two different bands that night, so we hope a lot of people can come out and celebrate. And we have perfect weather, we hope.
Great. Okay, let's move on to discussion presentation items. PAC update.
All right, I just wanted you to, well, two objectives here, for you to officially meet Kate. I don't know if all of you have the opportunity to meet Kate Cream.
I have it, and it's nice for me too.
Kate had the opportunity a month ago to also present, maybe not even a month ago, to the Village Board.
Not quite a month ago, a couple weeks ago.
Not quite a month ago. So, I mean, I just have a, my prelude is, this young lady hit the ground running, and we're going to see and hear about a lot of things that are already in place, exciting times for us. So I'll turn it over to Kate.
Thanks. No, this is really nice to have the opportunity to see all of you and kind of meet you. I look forward to working with each of you a little bit more, so thanks for having, for having me here, so I could give you a little bit of an update on what's going on. I think Brian may have included this handout before. If you don't have it, one side looks like this, the other one. I'm going to go over quite, quite a bit of the material on there, so. Brian, before we get into that, though, Brian mentioned that we'll have the Welcome Back at the PAC on August 29th, and I'm very sorry to say that I am out of town for a booking conference that week. I'm in the exciting community of Columbus, Ohio, so I'm afraid I'm going to miss it. But for those of you who are coming, it should be a really nice welcome back in the new space, so looking forward to that. Just some updates about the Performing Arts Center. By the numbers, we've seen 150 usage dates already of the venue. Fifty of those were publicly attended, and so we've seen an attendance of actually almost 13,000 now since November. So we have quite a few folks coming through that building. It is certainly not sitting idle, so. Most of that usage, as I think most of us knew would be, is school district usage right now. And the first thing that I did when I came on board is made sure I met with everybody within the school district that has definite needs within that space, musical, music, theater, whatever the case may be, to make sure that those, those events are happening in the building. And so we got those on the schedule right away. Right now, we're looking at 116 booked dates of the 212 dates that happened from November through May, so that's 55% of the dates in that building are being utilized by the school district, which I think is great. It's really a neat experience for those students to be in there, and, you know, I've, I've only been on board a few months here, but I've already seen students who are just so inspired by everything that, that space has to offer. In fact, one of the students who's going on to Stevens Point to go into arts management because of this new PAC we have in the school district, I said to him, I said, you know, you're going to get to college, and I can't guarantee that they're going to have as nice of facilities for you to learn on as you just had in these last few months of your schooling here in Ashwabanon, so, and he laughed at that, so I said, so don't, don't talk down to him, you know. We distributed a programming survey to not only the parents of the school district, but also via social media, as well as village residents through the press, the Ashwabanon Press. What we wanted to see was a general idea of what are people looking for at this new PAC? What kinds of events do they want to see there? Are they even interested in coming out and seeing public events in addition to the school events? And we got a really good response. To date, we have 373 respondents to that survey, ranging in ages from 18 years to over 75 years, so a nice, nice range. Majority of the respondents were ages 35 to 54 years, female, with four or more people in their household, and mainly from the zip codes in the Ashwabanon area, 313 and 304. And what was neat about that is, one of the questions in the survey was, what three words come to mind when you hear the word Ashwabanon, when you think of Ashwabanon? And this was something I, I put together for the village meeting as well, and that's what this word cloud is on the back of your handout. And I realize this is not a scientific survey, of course, but I think putting it in this format really puts forward what some of the number one answers were. And for this group, I think it's especially great to see the words "school," "pride," "quality," and "education" come forward. In fact, I did a quick little summary before I came over here to see, of all the responses, something related to quality schools was almost 15% of the responses that came back when you had an open-ended question about what do you think of when you think of Ashwabanon. So kudos to many people, including those in this room, but to everybody for making sure that we've got a great quality of education system in this community, which I'm a product of too, so I'm very proud. You know, the, the programming survey, the responses we saw, we, we definitely wanted to see rock music, pop music, musicals, variety shows, and comedy. Those were the ones that stood out the most. And so in response to that, and in tandem with the responses coming in, we were programming a community performing arts series at this new PAC. We'll be announcing that at the end of this month, so it's, it's rock and roll in time. We're going to have 10 shows balanced throughout the season, running from September through June of next year. Six of those shows will be national tours, four of those will be local productions, featuring local talent. Of the national tours that are coming through, student education sessions for students have been arranged with three of them. So again, I think being part of the whole community and being so close to the high school and, and the other schools, I think it's important that we incorporate that into an element, so not only is it great for the community, but it's also bringing in master classes and the like for their students to experience as well. Ticket prices are going to range from 27 to $44, kind of right in that price point of where people said they felt comfortable in their spending. Ashwabanon residents will receive 10% off standard ticket prices for all events in that series. And we also, I made sure that there will be Student Rush ticket pricing available for every show that's coming through as well. So for those of you familiar with Student Rush pricing, it's available night of show, any available inventory, $10 for our, for our students. Again, making sure that we're taking care of those students. And sponsorships are being solicited for each of these shows. Sponsorships are key to keeping ticket prices affordable while also bringing, when we're bringing in this high-quality national touring entertainment. So for comparison, I just put something on the sheet here. Without any sponsorships, with the series that's booked for this coming year, the average number of tickets sold needed to break even per show would be 271 tickets, which is about 38% of the house. We have 730 seats in there. But with sponsors, if we have a sponsor on each of the 10 shows, the average number of sold tickets needed to break even is 124, 17% of the house. Now, even without any sponsors, I think it's fairly realistic that we can average 271 tickets sold for each of these shows coming through. But I wanted to give perspective on, it really lowers the, the risk factor when we're booking these shows, mitigates any risk involved when we do have sponsors, and I'm happy to say we have sponsors for eight of our 10 titles so far, so we're doing very well.
That's great.
And then at the bottom is a summary of what those 10 shows look like. Gospel Songs of Hope, that is a Daddy Dee production, local talent. Catapult Magic Shadows is the amazing magic of shadow dancing. Some of you may have seen them on America's Got Talent. They're pretty popular on YouTube these days as well. They tell stories through music and shadow. It's pretty magnificent. I don't know how quite to describe it, but if you have the chance to Google it, I highly recommend it. This one also has a student education session, as well as the performance. Ryan and Ryan, kicking the clouds away, is a father and son Steinway artist duo. I happen to have the pleasure of seeing them in New York. They are phenomenal. They will also be doing a student education session with our students. The Drifters, I think you may have heard of The Drifters, they'll be doing a Christmas show in early December for us. Daddy Dee's Christmas, also local production. Recycled Percussion, if you haven't heard of these folks, they are very similar in nature to Stomp, to try to put them in perspective. They're currently playing in Las Vegas on the Strip at Planet Hollywood, and then they're going to be kicking off their, the rest of their tour throughout the country. This one also will have a student education session. Close to You, the Music of the Carpenters, another fantastic group I have the chance to see, they're phenomenal. Late Night Catechism, the original production, I don't, how many of you are familiar with Late Night Catechism? You're all kind of nodding, okay. So classroom setting, and a comedy, and a, and a favorite in this area from my, my past experience in the community. And then the last two are also local productions. Salute to America, which is right around Memorial Day, and then Rock and Roll Revisited. So a nice blend of offerings, kind of touching on some of those genres that people said they wanted to see, and we'll see how, you know, how the response is to all these. I think, I think it'll be strong, and I'm looking forward to the season ahead, so we are plugging away.
So would you envision more events in the future?
I do. I do. I think that this is a nice level of programming being offered this first year to see what it, response is like. We roughly have one event every month, is what this kind of works out to be like. There is definitely room for growth, but I also want to make sure that we allow enough time and space and usage in the building for the musical and some of the other more labor-intensive productions that the school district is putting on. The good thing with that, though, is because the previous auditorium is still in existence at the high school, it really allows a lot of groups to utilize both spaces. So as we utilize the new PAC for community productions, rentals, and things that we're booking, the school district and the students never feel homeless. I mean, there's always a place for them, and so I think it was key. I don't know if that was a cognizant decision that was made by this group or not, whether to keep the auditorium, but if it was, it was a good one, in my opinion, because there are definitely more events that can be held in any one location throughout the school year, which you probably saw when you were deciding on whether or not you needed this PAC. So that's, that's really good. Of course, the PAC is the brand-new shiny nice space, so triaging what goes in there and, and where things, where everything goes can be a bit tricky, but I think things are going really well. But yes, Jay, I think that will be probably increasing what's happening there.
Is there a certain number that you're targeting? You know, because you, you talk about that, the students have roughly have 50% of the dates out there.
Yeah.
This is probably maybe another 10%.
Sure.
You know, so probably two-thirds.
I think this first year is really going to show us how much interest is in renting the space as well from outside users, so that needs to factor in as well, how many dates are being taken up by that. We do have quite a few users who are touring the space, have committed to it, some dance organizations, some local theater groups. Some of them are booking a week at a time, you know, some are interested in long-term, coming back year after year. So it's a, in many ways, kind of seeing where everything falls. You know, we have a lot of opportunities and making sure that we have room for all of them. I could see this doubling, I could see us presenting 20 shows a year, you know. I think too, what's important is, we're announcing this series, that doesn't mean that's the only thing that's going to come through the building throughout the year. This is what we booked to announce as a series, but I think that there is opportunity for things. As the year goes on, maybe we add something in, or maybe an outside group is renting the building. From the community's perspective, they don't know who's presenting that show. I had the same thing at the Widener Center, you don't know who's presenting the show, but there's activity coming through the building. So I think, from an outside perspective, from the community's perspective, this, this PAC is going to be pretty busy year-round. But maybe 20? You know, maybe we grow up to that.
It's going to be interesting.
It is, it is. You know, I think, I think we just have to find the right, the right balance, and of course, there's lots of other entertainment opportunities in the area. We got the Packers and everything else, so you never want to book something on a Sunday afternoon in the fall in this town.
Did we resolve all the concerns with the PAC regarding power and everything else?
Yeah, for the most part, the punch list is complete, they sanded the stage. Tom has worked his magic, and if you remember this green room that's built into the cost of the facility, I want to guess it was priced out to be completed at an amount somewhere in the $50,000 range?
53.
53, thank you. So and, and the switch for power, that was another missing link. He's thinking we can get that around 10.
Right, which we were thinking was going to be 20, so.
So, I mean, that's really encouraging, so through donations, the rest of that money can be reallocated, reallocated to something else.
The cost, Tom's got it down to like half, 25,000 for the green room.
Yeah.
And when is that going to be done, do you think?
This fall.
This fall?
Yeah.
Well, at least the work will begin on-
We're really hoping, well, I'm really hoping that green room will be done by the time we have, The Drifters especially.
Yeah, and I think it's entirely possible, it's not major construction, it's finishing indoor space, so it shouldn't take a long time once we get the contractor. So I wouldn't be surprised if we see something come September meeting for your approval.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, another piece Kate has in the opera is she named a volunteer coordinator to recruit volunteer ushers, so that's all on play.
I got an email about that.
Oh, you did, right?
Yeah, did, so has, that has started already?
That has, so, former Ashwabanon, Ashwabanon, I tried to say alumni in Ashwabanon. Former Ashwabanon teacher, Wes- Ashwabhan teacher, Wes Karbanoff, one of you may know. He is, was, I know him from being at the Widener Center, one of my top floor managers out there. He has graciously offered to volunteer his time to help put together our volunteer usher program at the PAC. And so he's coordinating the collection of those who are interested, and together we meet weekly to work on a schedule of how many ushers do we need per show, greeters, ticket takers, people to help you to your seats, those folks. On average, we'll probably have about twenty volunteers per public event, just so that everyone is well-cared-for when they're in the space. And so yes, that's going very well. And then additionally, for the ticketing on these programs, we're continuing to use Ticketstar, just down the street, over at the Rush Center there. And they have been wonderful to work with. They're currently building all of the events in their system, so we can have online ticket sales capabilities and all the modern conveniences that most people expect when they buy tickets these days. So, yeah, it's going really well. We've just finalized, I didn't bring it, I just finalized a logo design for the PAC, and it's just, it's nice. It's all coming together, and.
So assuming that the shows are wildly successful.
Yeah.
There will be, you know, a profit margin.
Correct.
Assuming that a lot of people show. So how is that money accounted for? Do you use it then for marketing and booking future shows, or?
Right.
How does that work?
Do you want me to take that?
Keith can answer that one.
So everything for the PAC will be accounted for in the Community Service Fund. So it's completely separate from all our education money. Money can't move between the two of them without specific board action, so, and even then, it's very difficult and limited in what can be done. So everything that they're able to bring in through ticket sales will first cover the cost of the performers and any of the costs related to the performances. Then, we've worked with the village, and the agreement is if the performances aren't breaking even, they're gonna help cover the shortfall and we'll share that with the village. If the performances are doing better than break even, we're gonna keep that money in there, knowing that there are gonna be occasional performances that may not, as you try different things and try different price points. So that fund will be able to carry a fund balance in, and we'll be able to use that to offset costs, or if other changes need to be made or other equipment needs to be purchased, things like that, we can use that money. So that money will stay in the PAC.
Okay.
If there is a net positive margin at the end of each year or with each show. It'll stay there and cover any shortfalls or any needs there. So the advantage would, if we really see a lot of positives, the reduction in the need for tax levy to support some of the operations, because the district through Community Service Fund is levying taxes for the upkeep of the facility, the custodial time, and all the operations, utilities, all those things. It'd be a wonderful world if we didn't have to do that, if we could support it, but that's not our expectation at this point.
At least not initially.
Down the road, if it happens, it'd be great, but we're not putting that pressure on right now.
Okay. And then the other question I was gonna ask is, with your experience, the types of performances or performers that can come to a facility of this size, I'm assuming there's a lot of them out there.
There is a ton of them.
To pick and choose from, is that right?
There's quite, yeah. There's a lot of entertainment that can fit multiple-sized venues, but yes, this is actually a wonderfully sized venue as far as seating capacity goes. You know, seven-hundred-and-thirty seats, a lot of people would kill for.
We'd work for a long time.
Yeah. And that's actually what this conference I'm going to, it's not only a booking conference, it's also a conference of education in the field that I'm in. But that's exactly what this is about, is meeting with agents, finding out what product, AKA shows, that they have available for a space our size, not only in seating capacity, as it relates to gross potential on cost, but also stage-wise and the like. We're very well-equipped. I mean, there's always more equipment that we could purchase, but for what we have, we're very well-equipped with the line sets that we have for our rigging system. You know, we've got a good start-up of microphones, sound system, lighting is fantastic. We have an LED lighting system, which is wonderful. This is where I said to that student, he's probably not gonna have that to work on in college. So there may be some things that we need to rent to make a show happen, but all the nuts and bolts are there. The, you know, we've got a great foundation of, to allow us to do a lot of things in that space.
Great.
It's nice. It's not a high-school auditorium by any means. This is a community performing arts center. It was well-done.
Well, personally, I'm glad that you're in this role, and, you know, I'm excited to, you know, it's gonna be great to see how far you take this, and, you know, the sky's the limit here, I think, but.
There are people throughout the country learning how to say Ashwabhanon, as I deal with more agents. They're learning to pronounce and spell it. No, I think it's just one more thing that puts the village and the schools and all of us, this area, on the map, and can make us proud, so.
So with, you mentioned the Daddy D productions.
Yeah.
They were doing the Riverside Ballroom for a while, weren't they?
And they still are.
They are, so this will not replace that?
Correct. So the question about Daddy D does do many of these productions at the Riverside Ballroom in conjunction with the Dinner Theater component. That Dinner Theater component is unable to occur in our PAC space, but what they love is, they can't get any Saturday dates at the Riverside, because the Riverside looks at Saturdays for weddings, and rightfully so. So there, this group is so thrilled that they have a wonderful community space they can perform in on the weekend, and a lot of their patrons are looking forward to not only coming here 'cause it's new and nice, but also, right now at the Riverside, when you purchase tickets to one of their shows, if you don't buy the meal package, you get relegated to the back of the space, and that won't happen here. So I've already had a few patrons express how excited they are to me, that there's a new venue they can check out and attend these shows, so.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, they're adding on to what they're offering, rather than, you know, moving something, which is nice. You know, we're not cutting into anything existing.
So how are you gonna do marketing and advertising for the series and for just for individual performances?
Sure. We'll rely, of course, on social media. We're also developing a website. We own the domain ashwabanonpac.org, which will go live. Ticketstar will help us do some marketing. They do email blasts to their giant database, so that will certainly help us, having a collaborative relationship with them. And then, depending on the show itself, we're looking at a blend of print, TV, radio. Although, and part of our programming survey was asking people how do they wanna hear about shows. Almost everybody wanted it in some sort of electronic format, which is nice to hear. Obviously, you can't reach everybody that way, but it's certainly a more cost-effective tool for us to utilize. We have a pretty small marketing budget for this first year, and the hope is, as shows do well, and we can have a little bit of proof of performance, we can grow that. But it will be very strategic as who are the best audiences, how to reach the best audience for each show. But first and foremost, the biggest piece will be the brochure. We have a season brochure being worked on right now. Chrome is a local design company who is generously donating their services for that project, and that will get, be sent out to all Ashwabhanon residents. So we'll start with that.
Great.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thanks for letting me come in.
Okay, we'll move on. Discussion item number two, board position. Brian?
Hey, as we discussed last meeting, Barb is in transition right now, and we're still waiting to hear officially from her, but as soon as she puts in writing to us that she's relocated, our policy states that board has sixty days to appoint somebody. Jay and I are aware of two individuals that are interested. Do you wanna just share what we talked about, just ideas and fill in that position?
Yeah, we would probably have them come in before our next meeting, like a half an hour, give them fifteen minutes, give us a chance to hear their insights on the board and why they wanna be on the board, and what they can add to it, and then make a decision after that. And then, what would happen, we ought to go through the protocol, then they would, they would stay in that position until April election, and then that would be a one-year position after that, because that's what Barb would have left. And then, if they, so be it, if they would like to continue, you know, they had that one-year election, then the three-year election would be a year after that.
It's a one-on-one, and then it would become a three. Phil, Barb's two years remain.
So basically, they would be appointed, and then they would have to run for that last year?
That's correct.
Okay, so they would have to fill out paperwork by December to choose to do that?
That's right.
Okay.
So that would be relatively quick, then. Let's say they were appointed in September, and then had to file by December in order to be on a ballot for April.
That's right.
Okay.
Little unique because of the timing of where we're making the break here, but it's the process.
First time I've seen it in fifteen years.
Yeah.
When are you looking to have this, these meetings?
We would have it before our next board meeting.
Before, okay.
Yeah. Does that work for anybody if we did?
Five-thirty.
Oh, like that day?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Try to tie two minutes for it.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, next discussion item, annual seclusions and restraints report. Tammy?
Included in your board packet was the annual seclusion restraint report that I need to give before September first every year. As you see in your packet, we had one-hundred-and-thirty-seven incidents of seclusion or restraint. Eighty-one of them involved restraint, fifty-six of them involved seclusion. Twenty-two students overall were involved in those incidents. I broke it up for you, so you can see by building how, what the percentage was. Thirty-five percent of the one-hundred-and-thirty-seven incidents was at Cormier, one percent at Pioneer, sixty-two percent at Valley View, and two percent at Parkview. And then I broke it down by total count of seclusion and/or restraint by building, the number of students at each of those buildings, and then the total number of seclusions and/or restraints with students with disabilities. As you can see, Cormier had forty-eight seclusion or restraints, and three of the students there were the ones that were reported in those situations. Pioneer had one student, Valley View had fifteen, which accounted for eighty-five total seclusion or restraints, and Parkview had three students. Only one of the students was non-special ed, and that was a restraint by a police officer who had to remove a student. Parkview?
At Parkview.
We have been working really hard to be, and across the state, many directors have been working with their staff to be better at reporting seclusion and restraint. We've also been doing a lot of training within the district and across the state on appropriate ways to restrain or seclude students, but the bigger part of that is, what do we do to be proactive to prevent that? So there are three trained team members who need to be retrained every two years on what's called CPI. Crisis Prevention Institute provides that training to teach us how to de-escalate situations. I went through a four-day training this summer to recertify for that, and then we have two other staff members, one at Valley View and one at Parkview, who are also trainers. They recertified last year. We have training set up for tomorrow, next week Monday, and next week Friday, to help staff learn to appropriately seclude and restrain students. That's part of the training, but half of the training prior to working on the seclusion and restraint procedures is how to de-escalate and how to work with students, how to pinpoint triggers, how to understand how their behavior directly impacts the behavior of the student, and that behavior doesn't work in isolation. Sometimes if you think about situations you're involved in, especially if you have family or friends, you know their triggers, you know what you can say and do that's going to escalate the behavior, and you know what you can say and do that might de-escalate the behavior. We work on a lot of those strategies with staff to hopefully help prevent those situations, so we don't have to get into a situation where the child is a risk to themselves or someone else. We will not restrain a student if there's a different alternative that's least restrictive or less restrictive. We only restrain if there's a safety risk and the danger of restraint is less than the danger of what might happen if we weren't restraining the student. We have some tough kids that we work with.
So the trainers, you train all staff?
We train, all special ed staff have to be trained at least every, every other year. Regular ed staff, on Monday, we have a training called Diffusing Difficult Conversations that I run for about two hours, where I take staff, regular ed staff, through training that teaches them how to confront difficult situations and de-escalate that, whether it's with staff, parents, or students. And then, this school year, we're looking at putting more of the training into the high school to help the high school staff understand more of how to work with those high school kids, how to not get in power struggles. Not that they get in many of them, but sometimes, you know, it's tough. I mean, we've all, many of us have had kids, and we know how high school kids can be, and how, you know, how you have to look at their triggers and your triggers, and really understand how that affects everything. So we're looking at putting some of that together as well.
Now, the numbers that you presented here, I know you did this last year also. Are these lower than we had last year?
They're slightly higher than last year. Last year, we had seventy-one incidents of seclusion or restraint. The year prior to that, in twenty thirteen, fourteen, we had a hundred-four. So it really depends on the students that we get in and what their specific needs are. Last year, Cormier had a high percentage of the incidents. This year, Valley View has more, partly because the students that were the high flyers at Cormier have now gone to Valley View. We do contract with two outside agencies who have helped us do crisis management for students as well. We work with Mock Village and Brand New Day Program, which both do crisis intervention that we have written into students' IEPs if we need that, and then out of my flow-through grant, I cover the cost of that. If we work through the behavior intervention plan, and it gets to the point where we've done all of our steps, the student's still out of control, we make a phone call, they try and de-escalate the student over the phone. If that doesn't work, they come, they pick up the student, keep the student for the rest of the day, and then the student is, re-enters school the next day with a plan of what they need to do to be able to stay at school. So it's been very successful, where the kids want to stay at school, they don't wanna be taken off-site. A lot of time, it's a lot of attention-getting behavior, or behavior based on mental health issues that they're really struggling with. So we work pretty closely with the families and community agencies to really help work with the students. We also have what's called a coordinated service team, a CST team, that is made up of a county worker, a mental health providers, school staff, parents, and sometimes a child if it's appropriate. We've started that in the last two years, that have really brought us all around the table to meet monthly with some of these kids that we see more of these issues with, to talk about is how we as a whole team in and outside of school can we work with the student. What we do when we see these numbers also, so when you look at Cormier, for example, they had three students that had forty-eight seclusion or restraint situations. What we do is we look at those, all of those reports, those incident reports, and then we kinda pull it apart, or what are the common threads and themes that we're seeing here? What might we have missed? What could we do differently, and how can we be proactive? So when a student is going through this, at the end, we always try and debrief with them. They've calmed down, they're in control again, and we say, you know, what happened? What could you have done differently? How can we help you? What can we put in place next time, so this behavior doesn't occur again? So we try and make it a cycle where they're learning some good strategies at that point that they can implement. When we see a number of seclusion and restraints like that, it questions, okay, what are we doing? Is their behavior intervention plan appropriate? Do they need a more restrictive environment, because this one might be too over-stimulating for them? Are they pulled out too much, possibly, that they need to be included more and they want that? We're always looking for the function of why they're doing what they're doing, and once we know that, then we kinda try and guide the plans. So when I meet with staff in a couple weeks, we go over this information as well, and we start, I look at, you know, are there common themes with certain staff that seem to restrain more than other staff, and if there are, how can we address that? So we have all of those discussions as well.
Seems kinda, you know, concerning, though, especially at Cormier, they have forty-eight for just three students, you know. It seems like a high ratio.
It absolutely does, and it's something that we definitely are looking at. We do find... We do find, without getting into too many student-specific examples, we do find at Cormier, we try to provide services for as many kids as we can before sending students to Civil Hop, which is a much more restrictive setting. We really try and avoid that if we can, but some of the students that we see having more of the issues may be more appropriately, appropriately placed over at Civil Hop at some point. So, we're always having those discussions, too. Is this structure too inclusive for the student? So, really more restrictive for them, because we're making it so difficult for them to try and function, should they be in a more restrictive setting where they can actually find more success, too. So, we're, we're having those discussions, but when these little peanuts come in at three, four, and five, it's really hard to make that call, because we find frequently a student gets placed at Civil Hop, we don't get them back. So, we certainly want to make that a last resort that we think is in their best interest once we really have a handle on who the kids are, too. So, we're constantly looking at those types of things as well. But that's a very good observation, because when I saw the data, and I actually look at the data throughout the year, so I met with a couple of the staff at Cormier earlier in the year, who work with an autism consultant who comes in once a month, and we met and kind of problem-solved, you know, why are the numbers where they are? What's happening? What can we do differently? Is this least restrictive? Or are we, are we restraining more often than we should, and is there something else we could do in place of that? So, we do have those discussions as well. But that's a great observation.
So, with Valley View, there's 15 students, and I don't know how that's broken out by age, or by grade, I should say. Is there work done to make sure that they're spread out? You know, like, if there's five first graders, are they spread across different classrooms so that we don't burden one teacher with multiple discipline problems?
What we do at all of the levels is, we try and group kids as much as we can with similar needs. When they're behaviorally-involved students, we try and make sure we're not overloading teachers, obviously, because it can be a lot. Some of the kids that have more of the seclusion or restraints are in a more self-contained program. We have two classrooms at Valley View that poll kids more frequently, so they aren't in regular ed as much, and we provide aid support when they are in regular ed at times as well. Same thing at Cormier. Cormier's more inclusive. And so, as Pioneer, more of our significant kids are at Valley View, so that's why you see Pioneer's numbers lower than what you'd see at Valley View. We choose to put our services at Valley View for self-contained, so students who are more significant, rather than going to their home school of Pioneer, will attend school at Valley View, too. So, that way, we can stretch our resources and get the most out of what we have offered there. Similar to what Green Bay does, where certain schools have certain programs, whether it's hearing impaired, visually impaired, or what, what that might be.
Okay.
So, yes and no, we do try and group kids, but we do not try to overload them with special ed, especially the behavior kids, because they're a lot of work. But typically, the kids with behavior issues get a lot more support as well, and the teachers find it nice to be able to have a teacher, special ed teacher, or an ed associate in the classroom helping, because that person is able to help other kids as well.
I know, resource, too.
Yeah. And they learn a lot.
Okay.
I have a great, I have a great example of that. One of our high flyers was in first grade this past year, working with a classroom that Stephanie Kelly, one of our special ed teachers, co-taught in. And Stephanie taught the teacher a number of things around zones of regulation, and how, how to teach kids. She was working with this one student about how to know when you're out of control, and how to identify what your feelings are, and taught the teacher how to do it. And the teacher said, oh, my gosh, all of my first-grade kids in this room can learn this skill. This is, this is a great strategy. So, the two of them started doing it, then another teacher heard about it, and she wanted to do it. And now, this year, it's an initiative, and one of the goals at Valley View, for all staff to be trained in zones of regulation, so they can do it with their kids. And what a great way to include everybody in that, because even the teachers, the staff can learn, how do you regulate yourself? How do you know, how do you know why you're behaving the way you are? And really analyzing that. So, it's going to be something all the teachers are going to do, which is going to help all of our kids. So, it's a really neat way to see how that collaboration and co-teaching has really come to help a lot of kids and staff. Yeah, it's exciting to see that. Other observations or questions at all?
No. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Tammy. Okay, let's jump to action item number three, resolution to authorizing the one-year taxable tax revenue. Keith?
This is the line of credit item, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, every year, we renew our line of credit for cash flow purposes, and as a quick review, the way our funding works, we, the majority of our funding over halfway through the year, and probably almost a third of our funding in June or later in the year. So, we're paying all our expenses throughout the year, but we're not getting our revenue until late in the year. So, what we do, along with most districts in the state, is we do a cash flow borrowing. We borrow money so we can pay our bills, pay people salaries all year, even though we're going to get paid at the end of the year for a lot of our items. So, we've managed our fund balance over the years and tried to reduce the amount we've borrowed. When the TIF district closed several years ago, we had to start borrowing again, but there are needs up, because we're more property-rich, less state aid, more on taxes, and as you know, taxes, we don't get until January, February, and then even later for the last part. We were up to about $8 million of cash flow borrowing at 1.5 years ago. The cost of the district was over $60,000 out of our operating fund. We have, through managing fund balance and trying to manage our cash flows, we, this year, we're able to reduce our line down to $3 million. So, that reduces a lot of things. One, we switched from doing a bond issuance to a line of credit, which means we only borrow the money on the days we absolutely have to have the money, we pay it back as soon as we have money. When you issue a bond or a note, it's a term, one-year note, so you're borrowing the money the whole time. You can reinvest the funds when you, since you can't prepay on it, you reinvest the funds, but current interest rates and loan borrowing is much higher than the investment, so it doesn't make sense. So, we switched to a line of credit several years ago. I've been working with our bank to try and manage down the amount of our line to reduce the fixed fee. So, last year, we had a fixed fee of over $11,000 to do our line of credit. So, that wasn't interest, that was just the fee for them to make the commitment to us. This year, by reducing our line to $3 million, we've reduced that fee to $5,000. So, that's $6,000 of fixed cost that we were able to save. We, for this past year, we didn't get above $2.5 million on our line of credit borrowing at any point in time, so I think the $3 million is sufficient. If need be, if we were getting a cash crunch, we can always have school board meeting approve an extension on this line, assuming the bank is willing to do, which I believe they would be. But reducing that fee reduces their costs, which then in turn uses ours. So, I'm, I'm pretty happy that we're, we're saving probably for this coming year over $50,000 from where we were just several years ago on this. We're meeting our cash flow needs and have the flexibility to do what we want. With that, I don't know if there are any other questions on what we're doing, or why, or how this works.
And just a side note, have we, we haven't heard anything as far as the state budgets.
I was just going to say, that's our side note. That's our political frustration of that delay and the impact that makes on every school district in the state of Wisconsin. That, what are we, a month beyond?
Month and a half.
Month and a half.
I, I receive probably six or seven calls a week from my colleagues in other districts saying, how are you budgeting? What are you doing? Because nobody knows what to call that. The governor's budget's out there, the senate has their version, the house has their version, and it's going to be some combination of those three, but what it's going to be, we don't know. So, our budget's still very up in the air. We're probably one of the few types of organizations that would start their fiscal year without a budget in place, and we won't finalize our budget until we're four months into our fiscal year, and that's the way the law works and the timing of it is. Even once the state settles their budget, we wait for Third Friday Counts and Aid Certifications before we finalize the end of October. So, I, I'm going forward on the governor's budget at this point. I have some options in my back pocket if we get less than the governor's budget. The other two budget proposals have some items in there that I think would help us even a little more than the governor's budget, but I'm not optimistic that we're going to see those for this year. I think they might be future items, that I could see them putting in 2018, 19. So, I, I'm reasonably confident in, in the budget that we have going forward, but until the state settles, that's really up in the air. That really is separate from this, unless we have to make major decisions.
No, right, right, right. No, I just.
Just wondering.
I just wanted to bring, bring light that we don't have the money right now, because we don't know what we're going to happen.
I thought each of, that the senate version was similar to the governor's. Very similar, but there are a couple slight differences. The house version is, is a fair amount, is much more different than the senate version and the governor's, but the, the house version has some things that help us even more if they stay in, which you never know what things they're going to pick and choose from each package to go with. So, we're trying to be, as you know, I'm always conservative, I try to be cautious on this and make sure that we're, could we, at this point, we can't really change any staffing. So, if, if we would see a huge budget cut from what we were expecting, we've got to find non-staffing items to cut, or use fund balance, and that's one of the reasons that we carry a, a larger fund balance, a little above state average. The other reason is this cash flow borrowing, because that fund balance helps us reduce the amount of borrowing. So, so those are the two reasons that you carry a fund balance for the most part, so that protects us. If we can't balance our budget significantly different, we do fund balance to keep things rolling.
Okay, anything else? Can we get a motion on this, sir?
I'll make a motion to approve the cash flow borrowing as presented.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion in the second?
I'll second it.
Yep, I said motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 4-0. And you might as well just continue going, Keith.
Okay, I met with people from Laners Bus, and, and they, we, every year, if you get a quick review, we have a six-year rolling contract. The reason we have a six-year contract is, that's how long they lease their buses for, so that allows them to get the best rate on leasing their equipment, but it's part of the whole partnership thing. If we reduce their costs, they're able to reduce our costs. So, so we have a six-year rolling contract, but we only have the rate set for the upcoming year. So, part of our negotiation to extend is, I, I set the rate then for the following year. So, we're setting the rate for the 18, 19 school year. I've already factored in the 17, 18 rates, because we set that last year. We're extending the contract through 2022, 23. We're, the proposal, and I think is reasonable, is a 2.5% increase in the contract. And at the same time, they're reducing what's called the fuel escalator clause by a dollar, which saves, which brings the net cost to a 2% increase for us overall, which I think is very reasonable. They're really seeing large cost increases on their end for one labor, probably the biggest one, with employment, unemployment rate going down, they're struggling to find qualified drivers, so their labor costs are going up significantly, and they're actually seeing increases in their equipment costs, the cost of my buses. So, being able to get a net 2% increase, I think, is very good. Talked with my colleagues in the area, we're all in about the same range, even those that aren't with Laners are in about the same range as far as increases. So, I think it's reasonable, and I would admit, if I didn't say this, like I say every year, Laners does an outstanding job. I've worked with other bus companies, nowhere near the service level that I've experienced with Laners. I think we were their first customer, and they treat us like we're their first customer. Their headquarters are here in Ashwabanon. If I have a question or a concern, I can get right to the president, and they call me back. So, we have a very unique situation, having that right here, and they take pride in, in working with us, and they remember that we were their first customer as much as we remember. They were there when the district started. So, it's a great partnership, and they get asked on occasion by board members, do we bid this out? We don't. As long as the increase is reasonable and seems, seems to be sticking with what the market is doing elsewhere, we value the service more than bidding it out and changing the districts. I know that change bus companies, there's always growing pains with that change, so I don't think that's worth, if we would save something, and to be honest, I don't know that we, I think we wouldn't save anything. I think the cost would go up overall, even if we stayed with Laners, if we opened it up to bid, because then they have to change their whole borrowing structure for equipment and all those things. So, my recommendation strongly is that we continue with Laners, continue this contract, and accept the proposal of 2.5% increase on fees and reducing the fuel escalator by a dollar.
Another great example of the value of powerful relationships. Really, they are awesome.
We had about six or seven years ago, we, we were in a crunch in our budget, remember that, Keith? And they, they helped us out by taking.
We had agreed to a 2% increase in fees the year before, and then they came back and said, no, we'll freeze it for this year, and they helped us out.
Tremendously.
Partnership where we work together, and, and to be honest, at that time, their hiring costs were down, because that was when unemployment was really high, so they were able to find drivers without, now they're paying signing bonuses and all these things, and their rate, the hourly rate for drivers has gone up significantly. So, they were saving some money, and they shared it with us. So, it's just part of that partnership, working together.
Well, and just to speak to their, I mean, I dealt with them on a parent level, just moving them a little school year, calling people, going, how do my kids get on the bus? They were wonderful, didn't know me from Boo. All three kids in three different schools, three different, but handled it, not a problem, so kind. And then just to even be on field trips as a parent, field trips as a substitute teacher, never have I had a driver that's been, I mean, they've all been wonderful, super safe, very, I mean, and we've been in some very windy situations, crazy, going down, I mean, I've never had one issue with any level of their service, just as like a parent and an educator, too. Very good.
That's awesome. And I know they won safety awards again there. They won an award this year from the, you know, the US School Bus Operators, they won a safety award, and a quality award from them this year. So, they are one of the best, if not the best provider that we, that we see in this area, maybe in the nation, so.
Okay, with that, can we get a?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the extension of Laners' contract through 2022, 23, and the 2.5, you know, percent increase in rates and $1 reduction of fuel costs effective for the 2018, 19 year.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion in the second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries, 4-0. Okay, future board, board and superintendent communications. Anything?
Nothing further.
Nothing, just another reminder about the Ashwabanon Blast. What time does it start on? Saturday?
Nine to 10. So, the car show's from nine to three, and then Big Mouth's three to six, and National Pipeline's 6:30 to 9:30.
Okay.
Just going to get the logo for the pack for you.
Oh, cool.
You can continue with your future board.
Sure. Future board meetings and topics, the next board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday,